And there's cupcakes. Lupe, may I have the roll call, please?
Trustee Bueno. Trustee Henderson.
Here.
Trustee Hernandez. Absent. Trustee Hoffman.
Here.
Trustee Ino.
Here.
Trustee Vela. Absent. Trustee Vettis. Student trustee Francis.
Here.
Thank you.
I'll do the Fox votes. If you could please rise. A little hard right now to say. So, item B, the ceremonial oath of office. Chancellor Roman will now readminister the oath of office and reintroduce our 2025, 2026 student trustee Jasmine Munay Francis. So just on behalf of the board, I want to congratulate you. We're so excited to have you and just know that we are here to mentor and assist you in this journey and really truly also to listen to you as a student advocate on behalf of the almost quarter million students. Please know that the board and my colleagues and the chancellor are here to answer any questions that you may have and help and advocate on behalf of the students. And like I said, your voice is probably the most important here. So thank you so much. Please, if you have anything that you'd like to say, we would love to hear from you.
My mic's on. Okay, here. I want to say thank you to everyone that showed up today for this meeting. I know it's summertime and it could be crucial on both ends of the mental health part of making sure our students get ready for the fall coming in and assisting the ones in summertime and along with you just the daylights outside of work. So I do appreciate you guys being here and, you know, still fighting for our rights, our needs and resources. You know, without you guys, I wouldn't be here because I wouldn't have any mentors to look for. You know, so I appreciate you guys for putting your belief into me to lead the system to the way we've been fighting for. This year is very crucial on unity and I'm going to push that to the fullest, to my ability that I can. And with you guys, I know we're going to move farther than you probably thought we could have even moved to. So I'm very excited for the journey we're coming to and I hope you guys are excited as well. Just want to make sure, just remind you guys, you know, it's not about the doors that get closed, it's about the doors that's about to open. So you know, whatever doors get closed is like let's reunite and let's look for another door that's open, right? So this year is very important because this is going to be either we make it or break it, right? So I want to make sure we are introducing these students into real education and what it is for their rights, basic rights that's never been taught into our preschool for college, right? So be definitely gentle, be patient. Patient is really the key because we're dealing with new kids who don't understand our system, who don't understand how things go. So when they come up here and they're screaming or shouting, they're coming through empathy and they're coming through emotions, but they just want to understand it. So during this journey, I just want you guys to have patience and understanding along with me while I make my mistakes and arrive with me when I make the best decisions ever, you know, in our lives. So, you know, I'm grateful to be on this board with these, you know, beautiful trustees because, you know, I know they're not here to break me, they're here to continue my journey and break me free to more adventures. They're here to build upon me and I'm excited for that, you know, and they always let me know that they're here for me and they work for me. So let's start that there. Thank you for you guys. Thank you for the one welcoming and I even still appreciate you guys making sure that today is my day and you made it my day. Thank you.
And in your honor, we will break for five minutes and have cupcakes outside. Yeah, please, you cannot eat them in here. Vice Chancellor Gordon is watching. C, which is public comments, the First Amendment and Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee or a public official in the performance of their duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public's business rather than on private or unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and the First Amendment do not protect the famatory statements made which may subject a speaker to personal liability. Are there any members of the public signed up to address the board trustees regarding regular agenda items?
No ma'am.
Okay, great. So next item is disclosures. Chancellor, could you please lead the agenda item on disclosures?
Thank you again, President Ino. I will read the following disclosure. Prior to proceeding to vote on the matters before the board today, trustees are requested to advise staff if there are any items on the agenda for which they have received a contribution from a participant in the matter which requires disclosure and recusal under the Levine Act or another conflict of interest law. Trustees, when your name is called, please advise if you have disclosure to make on any of the items on the agenda and if so, identify the agenda item number for each such item. Please also state the basis of the conflict by either identifying the donor or a disqualifying campaign donation or by providing information about another disqualifying financial interest. I will take one now. Trustee Bueno, any disclosures? Trustee Henderson?
None.
So Hernandez, absent. Trustee Ino?
None.
Trustee Vela, trustee Hoffman?
None.
Trustee Vela, absent, and trustee Vettis?
None.
Thank you.
Great. So item E, approval of the agenda order of business amendments. The land acknowledgement, the Los Angeles Community College District holds lands that originally and are still uninhabited by the Gabrieleño Tongva Gabrieleño Band of Mission Indians, Kids Nation, and San Manuel San Fernando and San Fernandoño Tavium Band of Mission Indians. We honor and respect their elders and descendants as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. Before we proceed, Chancellor Roman, are there any changes to the agenda and order of business?
None.
May I have a roll call, oh, sorry, may I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda of order of business?
So moved, Henderson.
So moved by Henderson. I can second. Ino, roll call Lupe?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
May I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting and closed session of June 18th, 2025?
So moved.
Moved by Henderson. Second by Bueno. Roll call, oh, any discussion? Roll call please Lupe.
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Next is reports from the representatives and employee organizations. Do any members of the resource table wish to speak and be recognized to make comments before the board?
Good afternoon. My name is Angela Chivari for the record and I'm representing the district academic senate. First of all, I want to announce that we have a couple of upcoming events that may be of interest to many of you. The first one is the AI summit that's going to take place on Friday, August 22nd. And we are very excited about this event. We're going to discuss AI in a number of different contexts and how it impacts our academic programs as well as our students and the labor market. So we are actually expanding attendance of this event to the regional area of the other colleges in the LA region. So we're looking forward to learning a lot more about AI as it transforms education. The second event is our joint summit on Friday, September 26th, I'm sorry, 26th. So we're also looking forward to this event and we want to discuss AI as well for this particular event. The other thing I just, you know, as we come upon our, the anniversary of this experiment of democracy, I think this moment of history is a very, the weight of what's happening is very serious. And I think all of us need to ask ourselves, are we doing enough? Are we doing enough to protect our students and are we doing enough to protect our communities? As we see masked individuals in unmarked vehicles conducting raids, picking people off the streets, separating families. This is happening now. I want to say that our democracy is really in great peril. And I think all of us have to ask ourselves, are we doing enough? For, to protect our students, protect our programs, protect our communities. The gravity of this moment is really difficult to overstate. So one of the things that we are really concerned about is notification. Notification of our community when we have these sorts of raids happening. What can we do to ensure that our students are protected and that we don't, we don't know in many cases if these individuals are actually federal agents. They could be very well impersonating federal agents and conducting illegal kidnappings. How are we going to protect our students from that? So I think it's really important for us to be extremely proactive here and take a stand. The moment is now. We can't really push this back any farther. We have to act to protect our students. I think this is probably the most difficult crisis that we are facing as a nation, as educators and as public servants. What can we do? And I encourage you to push the boundaries of what you might think is appropriate. Because this is a time for courage. This is a time to take a stand and to make a statement that we will not allow our students to be imperiled. If there's anything we can do to protect them, we should do it even if it means pushing the boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the resource table?
Well, good afternoon, President Ino, members of the board, Chancellor Roman. I do want to congratulate student trustee Francis once again and thanks for the cupcakes. For the record, I am Deborah Harrington, president of the Teamsters, representing our district deans. I do want to actually thank Angela for those comments. I, they were eloquent and necessary. And I do want to say on behalf of our members, of course, our student safety and our employees' safety, our sense of and commitment to the values that we all share. I promise you that the deans are going to do their best to support faculty, staff, administrators in the fight ahead. I mean, it's a fight. And I do want to commend student trustee Francis for calling us together and thinking about what we need to do. I don't, I don't have anything eloquent to add to that. Both of you all were just tremendously, tremendously good. So what I want to do is on behalf of our members, I want to rise in full support of the resolution recognizing disability pride month, National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and International Day of Persons with Disabilities. This resolution is not only a celebration, it is a commitment. It affirms our shared values of dignity, equity, and inclusion for all members of our campus communities, especially those with seen and unseen disabilities. Our district serves thousands of students with disabilities each year and our staff and faculty work every day to ensure that these students are empowered, supported, and heard. We also recognize the many faculty, classified professionals, and administrators across the district who themselves identify as people with disabilities. Their contributions enrich every aspect of college life. Let us not, let us not only acknowledge their value, but continue working to remove barriers, both physical and attitudinal, that prevent full participation and inclusion. This resolution reflects the kind of leadership we must continue to embrace, one that moves us towards a more accessible, compassionate, and just educational environment. And I know that in particular, our deans deliver on this kind of leadership. As I've said before and say again every day, the deans of LA CCD encourage diversity of thought, create a culture of trust, embody an unselfish mindset, and foster leadership in others. They find a way to lead from the middle and more than anything else, they always find a way to deliver. We thank the board and chancellor for this thoughtful and forward-looking resolution, particularly during times like these when it is incumbent upon us to model the values and actions rooted in equity, diversity, and inclusion we want to embody in the LA CCD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And good afternoon, trustee, President Ino, to the trustees, chancellor, and welcome. Student trustee Francis, welcome. I would like to also echo the same sentiments. Educating ourselves on how we protect our students, our fellow colleagues and our loved ones, what we're seeing is authoritarianism by no other definition and I believe in civil disobedience. And as a union leader, I look back at historically why unions were formed. And so we do have to get out there and start marching. So there's a ton of things that we can all do to show up in this space. And boots on the ground is what's going to be required. So thank you Angela for bringing that up and our commitment as a whole to keeping our students and our classified informed on how we can participate. I do want to say the same thing, July is disability pride month. And with that, I do want to say for classified And with that, I do want to say for classified, unit one employees, what we're seeing with that is trying to educate our members and also supervisors on how this ADA accommodations in our district and what that looks like. When you look at board policy, which is the administrative procedure 7348, we all have to be educated on what that looks like and what it requires from our supervisors and how they educate classified to enact upon those accommodations with dignity and equity. And what does it mean for us to make sure that we give people respect who have invisible disabilities? Whether it's, are you codified it, mental impairment, physical, whatever? What we are seeing is that there's not enough education on how that process works. And what that looks like is harassment and the breakdown of the mental integrity of a person. We have classified who are showing people their prescriptions, who are begging for accommodations. And when you look at the board policy, it states that if it doesn't cause this district undue hardship, you should take every effort to make reasonable accommodations. We're not seeing a process that mitigates bias, that protects people's information, that also gives them integrity, that says that we're working in tandem with you. That's problem. Our mission as a college is to protect and stand with our students, most of who also have invisible disabilities. That's why we have departments like DSPNS. If we're not going to live in application of what that looks like for our students and also for those that we employ, we are missing the mark somewhere. Reasonable accommodations should always be the goal if it doesn't cause undue hardship by the board policy that governs us all. And that's not happening. I'm seeing people put negative evaluations, skipping progressive discipline steps, and writing people up who they know have a problem and who's expressing it with open, with openness, asking for help. And I think it's not okay. And I have to be very calm because I'm a social worker, graduated from USC and process of getting my LCSW. So this really triggers me here. So when I see people's evaluations, are there being microaggressions or loud statements that are derogatory to their condition, and I'm seeing them being written up for things that you could have mitigated, it shows me that that's a willful act of intention and that puts our district at liability. We are to have competent supervisors and men who are going to make sure that they do not put this district at a liability. You have to understand the process, and if you don't, we have a duty to educate on how that should look and how we implement it. We are seeing a rise in harassment cases. We all know that staffing is going to be short right now. All hands on deck is required for all of us from the top down. You cannot ask somebody to do more and encumber more work and stretch them thin and think it has no consequence on their mental or physical being. So if you're asking everybody to be all hands on deck, you must also treat people with equity when you do their evaluations, when they're struggling and you're encumbering new programs. That is where I will stop, and I'd leave that there with you. And thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Where the trustees and chancellor, my name is Chrisan Ozian, representing SEIU Local 99. And I want to say congratulations to our new student trustee. We look forward to working with you. And I also want to thank Angela for her speech regarding, you know, our immigrant students. As, you know, our city, this nation continue to face attacks against our immigrant community. You know, I want to thank Dr. Ramon and this board for your continued commitment and effort and support for taking a proactive measure or approach and protecting our immigrant students. As we all see, these attacks has made an impact on our community, our students, and people are living in fear. And, you know, we want to continue to do all we can, you know, to protect our students, our immigrants, students. Also, today, our classified employee recognition list came out today. And I just want to say that I'm pretty disappointed because it was only 10 names that was submitted for the fiscal year. And most of those names came from Southwest College, Los Angeles Southwest College. So I want to thank you, Dr. Cold Pepper, for that. But, you know, we got to do better with recognizing our employees. You know, there's a lot of unsung heroes out there that deserve recognition. And, I mean, when our members received notice that they, you know, was recognized, I mean, they were very appreciative. And, I mean, it uplifts the morale, the work environment. So it's, it's definitely something that's, that's needed. And so, you know, I just want to say that I think we need to do more with recognizing our employees. And then also, Andrea, she brought up the fact with the reasonable accommodations, people are not being approved for reasonable accommodations. We're also having the same issue with that, where our members are requesting for accommodations and they're not being accommodated. You know, so that's something that also needs to be addressed. And then also, I wanted to bring to this board that we really need to revisit the schedule, the, the, the B chef over at Los Angeles Trade Tech for the custodians. The issue before was that, you know, it wasn't a lot of students working at the time. And so, you know, most of the custodians was switched over to A shift. Now you have, the enrollment has increased. And from what I was told, that you have 20 custodians that's working on A shift under one supervisor. You know, that's, that's unacceptable right there. But the point is, is that we need to start bringing more custodians back to the B shift, especially since enrollment has increased. And it's very difficult because we're talking about custodians that's coming in at 4:30 in the morning or 6 o'clock in the morning. And you get a very short timeframe to do, really to clean anything before the students and staff, you know, come to work. So it, it just doesn't make any sense. So I just asked that we revisit this again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Welcome again. Congratulations, Jasmine. Glad you're on board. Really enjoyed your acceptance speech focusing on students, which I like to always hearken back to the reason why we're all here, the progress of students. I myself have went through the Los Angeles Community College District for education. So I see the power, the transformative power that it has. So welcome aboard. I'm sure you'll learn a lot. Board members, President Eno, chancellor. Hello. For the record, my name is Bruce Hicks. I'm the SEIU 721 president, representing the supervisors in the Los Angeles Community College District. I really want to just be brief. I'll be brief, and I want to talk about the power of collective bargaining. Last week, we had our training for SEIU 721 members at Pinstripes in Canoga Park. It was 50% of our membership were in attendance. David Vella, trustee Vella, was our trustee. I want to publicly thank him for coming out and inspiring our members there, as well as the support we received from the vice chancellor Williams office. They came and gave a training. We also had, I spoke about this, Dr. Trashawn Hall. She went in depth with the merit system and the collective bargaining processes, all these things that we need to know about working in an environment where we're serving students at. And then we also had Veronica Gunn. She came out from AFMSCE. I'm probably saying that wrong, but she's the international vice president. She talked about advocacy. So why is this important in the negotiation, the power of collective bargaining? Because in order to pay, we all know that money is the instrument that moves things around here. And we negotiated in our contract a few contracts ago to get this professional development. Our members needed. I see a lot of grievances that we deal with come to education and understanding the contracts, understanding the merit system. So we have received a lot of positive feedback from that training symposium. And like I said, it really comes down to what was gained at the table. So I'm appreciative to the district, our members are, that we can come to a resolution where we can add professional development, no shade to any other units, but I think the, no, I think, I believe, I've been a classified employee for 28 years. The professional development is lacking in that area. I'm also a adjunct faculty, and one of the things I've realized right off the bat was right in the training, so many different trainings when I got on that side. So really appreciative of that. And I just want to thank all those who came out and support, all the members who were able to come and you took something away from it. I'm very happy for you because we all want to be able to serve the students and having the right knowledge to do that. And then lastly, and not really lastly, I continue to commend the chancellor for meeting once a week with all the labor leaders, getting emails out, telling us what's happening as it relates to the environment that we're in, taking feedback. I mean, it kind of helps us not feel as helpless as a lot of us feel in this environment. SEIU, I had some members asking, well, you don't put a lot of stuff out about protests and things of that nature. Well, the mothership sends those, and I call it the mothership, SEIU sends that out to the members directly. They're organized as far as daily where there's protests out. So to the members at home, if you want to get involved and be a part of some of these protests, I can continue to forward that message. Maybe you'll see it more if it's coming from me, but it's coming from mothership. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. I think that's everyone. 1521 is not present. Is anyone online? Lupe from AFT 1521? Okay, great. So item G is next. Yes. Reports from the board. And we currently, due to some colleagues not being here, we just have one today from trustee Buena. Could you please summarize the proceedings of the Student Protection Task Force that you chaired on June 26th with trustee Henderson?
Thank you for being the summertime. We had excellent participation. We had some of our policy advocates really defining for the participants what the stance of LA CCD is. And the bottom line is, and I also want to thank trustee Henderson, obviously, for, for being present. I think the committee represented the board and, and, and staff. And I'll even call out our, our general counsel for giving steadfast, sustainable advice and feedback. Maybe not the, the feedback that I would prefer in my private life, but in my public life, it is what is required, as you can tell by my tone. And that is what occurred at the committee. And it was also clear that the committee represents, represented the will of the board without necessarily knowing exactly what we, what the board wanted to make sure that we're not in the crosshairs. Of who? I think we could figure that out.
Thank you. I want to thank the both of you for leading this effort. I think it definitely aligns with the representative reports to show that we are actively working on this as best as we can. And hopefully in collaboration, we'll, we'll do our best to protect our students and our community. So thank you. Okay, so next we have for travel authorization, may I have a motion in a second on item G2?
Sure, sure. We're going to pull?
Yeah. I'll do that after we get a motion. Motion by trustee Buena?
Second.
Second by trustee Henderson. So we do need to remove trustee Henderson and trustee Vella from the second one. Fifth Annual California Association of Black School Educations there, and now that they're no longer going to attend. So if we could just remove that. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Lupe?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote? Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Item H, resolutions in recognition of disability pride month, National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and International Persons with Disability Day. May I have a motion in a second on item H1?
I'll move to approve.
Moved by trustee Hoffman?
Second.
Second by trustee Henderson. Any discussion? Please.
First of all, I really want to thank President Edwards for your comments. Thank you so much. When I saw this resolution, you know, I was going to make comments myself, but you, I, you said everything that I was going to say. Oftentimes, disabilities are invisible, and we don't know what somebody is afflicted with or suffering from. As a board, when we see dismissals or discipline coming to us in closed session, and oftentimes, or lately, I would say, it could be an employee who has had many years of service with us. I would just ask as, as managers, as supervisors, as deans, and vice presidents and presidents, you know, sometimes we need to remember that we're all human and we're all in this kind of fight together. We've seen an unprecedented number of especially anxiety-related and mental illness coming through. And, you know, sometimes employees just need a little grace. They just need somebody to say, you know, yes, there are laws and there's a way that you need to go through the ADA process or FMLA process, but I'm here for you if you need something, because I feel like that's not always happening. Just today, in my day job, and I hate to always talk about my day job, but I just have to make this comment that, you know, we've been extremely busy. I don't know what happened this summer, but summer is no longer like a lazy summer anymore. It's like just as busy as the regular semester. And so I have a full, like, cadre of counselors coming in every single day. And I was out of town on vacation and I'm getting text messages from a counselor saying, like, I can't come in today. My daughter is sick. So today I saw her and I said, you know, how is your daughter doing? And she said, oh, she still has a fever. And I was just too nervous to not, to miss work. And so I had to have my mother-in-law come. And anyway, someone, I said, you know, I'm so sorry. And if you need more time, like, I understand. Another counselor heard me say that and just came up and said, you know, thank you, because you never know what people are going through and you're so understanding. And I would just ask for understanding and grace. And, you know, to remember that people generally want to be here and they generally want to work. And let's figure out a way to make people feel like they're valued, even if they're going through a rough time, or even if they're suffering from a disability. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other colleagues want to say anything? Thank you. So with that, can I have a roll call, please, Lupe?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Great. Now we are on item I1, open a public hearing. The board will now open the public hearing regarding the final project proposal before considering adoption. Are there any members of the public signed up to address the board for the public hearing? No.
No.
The public hearing is now closed.
Just, just, you know, is it, I mean, I know we just announced it. And it is an agenda. Is it possible to have a staff report?
Sure.
On what the hearing is supposed to be about?
Okay, thank, thank you for that.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. Yes, we do have, uh, several projects, I'm going to ask vice chancellor Sada to come forward. Uh, they're listed under, uh, I two. Uh, these have come before you in FIMPOC, uh, you have the kinesiology, uh, south replacement, so utility infrastructure replacement. At Trade Tech, we have the advanced transportation manufacturer replacement. Valley has a store utility infrastructure replacement. City is communication cinema, uh, mission instructional building replacement. Southwest, we have technical education center replacement. Valley is a south gym replacement and West LA is physical education replacement. Vice chancellor Sada?
Thank you chancellor, uh, good afternoon, board members. The, uh, intent of the public hearing is a new set of rules that were passed by the state that govern the use of proposition two funds, which was the most recent, um, state capital outlay funding program, which started a few years ago. Uh, the rulemaking was continuing to happen in Sacramento and it wasn't completed until this year, when we received notification that whenever we submit an IPP and FPP process, that we would need to, um, uh, have a, hold a formal hearing for the purposes of full transparency for those funds and how they're spent. So, um, what we've been asked to do is, um, buildings or items, excuse me, of the projects that were just listed, numbers six through nine are this year's submissions to the state. And we formally submitted items one through five, which were approved and are funded. And we're just holding a hearing, uh, as was requested for not only this year's submissions, but also previous year's submissions, uh, again, which have been funded.
Any further questions?
Just to add a curiosity, are any of these projects, um, going to change facility master plans? Are they all just subject to the state law requirement to do a public hearing?
Uh, these projects have already been, or will be with your approval in a later part of the agenda. These submitted as part of this five-year state capital outlay program. Uh, these, uh, funds will be leveraged with our own local bond funds. And if we are successful with the state, they'll be placed into the queue for execution of, uh, moving forward in the next several years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a question.
Please. Um, yeah, uh, student.
I got a question for, from the students. The students are asking, uh, would the signs include friendly bathrooms for our ADA students compliance?
Uh, yes trustee Francis, these, uh, buildings will all be in full compliance with the most recent ADA laws.
Great question. Anything else board colleagues? Great, I'll close the discussion.
Thank you.
And the public hearing is now closed. Moving on to item J, combined consent calendar. We now have for our review, the combined consent calendar for items K one through W four. These items include consent calendar for human resources, academic affairs, student services, budget and finance, um, and business and facilities. May I have a motion and a second to adopt the combined consent item calendar? So moved by trustee Bola?
Second.
Second by trustee Henderson. Are there any items that require additional information?
Can I just ask one question? Under the, um, public hearing, it says public hearing to adopt the final project proposals. Did we need, is that an action item? No? Did we not need to vote on that? Oh, it's later. Okay, great, thank you so much, I was just a little confused, thanks. Yeah.
A clarification. Okay, no, 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 so, um, we have a motion on and a second for items K one through W four under consent, um, any discussion on any of those items fellow colleagues? No? Great, Lupe, roll call please.
Student trustee Francis advisory vote? Trustee Bola?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Items X one through X ten, may I have a motion and a second to adopt business items X one through X ten?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Henderson? Second by trustee Ino? Are there any items which require additional information? If none, um, and no one, may I have a roll call please Lupe?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bola?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we're under item Y, facility items. May I have a motion and a second to adopt facility items Y one through Y ten?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Henderson? Second by trustee Ino? Are there any items which require additional information?
Um, yes. Can I get some additional information on Y five? Is that an eight million dollar, um, expense for the, for voice over IP? And can I get a presentation?
Call vice chancellor, let's, uh, forward please, thank you.
Good afternoon, board of trustees, thank you for the question, trustee Hoffman. Uh, the district currently has fairly antiquated disparate telephone systems for our colleges. This project has been underway for the last five years now. We have done extensive, um, assessment of our current, um, capabilities and also looking at way not only to modernize the telephone system, but also add, um, phone capabilities in every one of our classrooms for emergency purposes. Additionally, will be fully connected with the Enon nine-one-one system. And we'll move away from fairly, um, old copper-based technologies to, um, voice over, uh, internet. These types of projects typically would have happened around 2005. So our district is quite, um, quite behind in moving to voice over IP. But we do need to transition at some point. Our phones are failing more than them.
I mean, I have a question, is anyone using phones anymore? And what does voice over IP get us? I mean, a lot of people, a lot of offices have Zoom and they're just fielding calls through Zoom or through Jabber. There are so many other ways that, uh, we're serving the public and serving students and serving each other that I'm not sure. And did this go out for a competitive bid? I'm just wondering, are we gonna, are we buying something now that's also going to be antiquated? Cause I haven't heard that anyone's really using voice over IP anymore, unless I'm completely out of the loop.
So, um, there are a lot of, um, organizations that use voice over IP. Voice over IP is basically moving to digital communication versus analog communication. So as I noted, this type of transition from analog to digital would have happened in the early 2000. We continue to use analog communication, which puts our district at risk in terms of being able to, to, to use phones. To answer your question around whether people actually use telephones, yes, they do. There is also a requirement for us for emergency purposes to have, um, um, communications available in the classrooms for, for emergency purposes. So that was specifically contemplated in this, um, request for proposal to ensure that we add phone lines, um, in each classroom. Now, there are additional services that we use such as Zoom. You mentioned there are other support services that are using streaming. And, um, and we utilize those to the extent possible. It doesn't mean that the footprint that we are going to put in place is going to be one-to-one replacement for the analog. It's going to primarily support classrooms, emergency, um, reception desk, emergency, um, um, offices, as well as student support services and all of our, um, um, areas where we are front-facing. We looked, um, a couple of years ago at moving to mobile, uh, telephones for all of those areas. And it was too cost prohibitive to, to do so.
So if someone is in a classroom and there's an emergency, they're calling the sheriffs? Like who's answering the phones? That's, um, like, do we have switchboards still? Do we have an operator? I know I've tried calling offices in LACC D at all of our colleges, no one picks up the phone. So, like, why? That's, that's what I'm asking, because I think there are other ways to communicate that are a lot more efficient than a landline.
I don't disagree with you, um, that there are other means of communication. We are still, um, we still have the requirement to provide emergency communication. So being able to call nine-one-one from a, from a phone line, um, it's still critical. Yes, people could use their mobile devices, but we don't, um, we don't issue a mobile device to every individual in the, in the district. It would be too cost prohibitive for us to do so. Having a phone line in each one of the classrooms hovers the, the, um, the, the legal liability for us to ensure that we have that emergency connectivity. Also connecting those, um, lines with the sheriff's offices on each one of the campuses, it's also critical in case of an emergency happens. So one big component of this was to ensure that we resolve for the emergency management, um, needs of the campus, um, which currently we don't have a comprehensive solution. The second portion of this was to ensure that we have working phone lines. We have many campuses that have had spotty, um, capabilities. And that does not answer your question about whether people answer the phones. And unfortunately, from a technology perspective, I'm not going to be able to, to, uh, to, to answer to that. It's similar if you provide them a different means of communication. So if people have email, do people answer to email? I cannot, you know, you provide them the tools for them to have those communications happening. Whether they are using those tools, that is a matter of, um, the individual services to, to address.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add one thing? There, there are certain buildings that were designed to have no, uh, cellphone reception. And I'm thinking of ELEC, uh, that was purposely done. So we worked with our faculty union on that to make sure we had hard lines because folks were afraid in the event of an emergency. They were actually in a lab that they would not have the ability to communicate out. So there's part of that as well as a safety feature, but your points are well made about, we'll work on the other piece on answering phones. Thank you.
Great, and this is paper with bond funds, I see, correct?
Yes, and to answer your, your question about the RFP, yes, this was publicly bid and there were three responsive proposers. And this particular packet fusion, uh, was the one selected by the, uh, by the committee.
Thank you.
Of course.
Great, um, is there any other items that require additional information? No. Okay, if not, um, may I have a roll call please Lupe?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote? Not present. Trustee Bola? Not present. Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Right. Item Z, notice, reports and informations. There are two notices, no action is required at this time. Item AA, announcements and indications of future proposed actions by members of the board of trustees. Would any of my colleagues like to make an announcement or indicate future proposal actions?
No, um, so we were supposed to have an advisory plus, um, meeting with the chancellor. However, there was another press conference, very similar, um, in context and content. And so we postponed it, so we still intend to do that. I think also in response to the resource table, um, there is coming up on July 10th, a non-violence training held by Unite Here 11 and the, um, AFL-CIO. And it's going to be local, um, on Thursday, the 10th, at I think five to eight thirty. And they're trying to get a thousand people to do this non-violence training. I've signed up and so I would encourage all of you to look into it. I think that the chancellor may, um, send something out as well, but, you know, Senate and the bargaining units, it's a union-led effort and so I'm sure hopefully some of you have been informed of it. But I, I think it'll be a great training to help, um, prepare us and protect our campus and communities. So yes, um.
Justina?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, as I did make the note for myself, but I, in the spirit of sort of addressing sort of concerns on the floor, I did, I did want to indicate that there's at least two bills that are, uh, introduced at the legislative, uh, level to talk about, um, impersonating officers. And I would, um, encourage our legislative team, um, to connect. And I think that the sort of statement is in general and that's what Sacramento is looking at. However, um, it is a comment, um, about, um, these types of presences on campuses, campuses are open. Uh, and so in essence, um, I think kind of pulling up and asking for identification should be sort of our general policy. Uh, I know several cities in the area have begun that a little bit more aggressively because there is, I think frankly, a number of, um, bounty hunter style, um, individuals that seem to be impersonating, um, federal officers, which is, uh, a huge problem. But, um, but beyond the two bills for us to sort of, uh, look at it as part of our legislative agenda potentially and, uh, and to understand sort of what the procedure should be when, um, those types of personnel enter the campus, especially because they're not even using, you know, um, exempt vehicles and they're not, you know, it seems to be like rental cars with stuff you buy on Amazon that they, that's posted on and slapped on, extremely problematic, but we can identify that and at least if our personnel is notified, they can direct those people to where they're supposed to be.
Great, um, I, I think I just thank the chancellor, um, my board colleagues and everyone here. I think we're all along the same path right now, um, collectively. And so like you all have said, you know, we all need to step up and do what we can. And so thank you for that. Public comments, so request to address the board for and trustees regarding non-related matters on the agenda. Just to remind you again, the first amendment and Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee or public official in the performance of their duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public's business rather than on private or unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect defamatory statements made which may subject a speaker to personal liability. Are there any members of the public signed up to address the board on non-matters not on the agenda? I do have a handful here. So. Right. So we have, um, Angela Johnson, Beatrice Alcala, Rhonda Guest, John, John, all to discuss, uh, Los Angeles can see the city college journalism program. Is, are any of you present? Sure, please. First is Angela Johnson. And you'll have three minutes. Take your time. Yeah.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Congratulations. We tried to make it. We tried to make it, but congratulations. Thank you so much for the invitation. All right, so I'm here on behalf of the, um, collegiate. Just want to show you some of our big stuff. This is our last magazine, they took our budget away. The last time we were able to publish this for a color award-winning magazine was spring 2024. Okay, so there you go. Here's, uh, magazine placement award, the Los Angeles, uh, City College Collegiate Times. This is 2021, this is our associated collegiate press award. Okay, here we go, here's another one. This is a big one, we just got this one. This is our newspaper of the year, student newspaper of the year. This is the Los Angeles Collegium, we are under attack at LACC. This is our informational graphic, um, JACC award we won in 2017. This is us, okay? Uh, which one is this? Okay, silver crown, this is our silver crown, we got medal. This is our silver crown, we had a gold crown, we got a silver crown. Okay, so this is us. All right, so I just want to quote my team, I'm jumping around, just want to quote, uh, trustee Andrew Hoffman, thank you so much, you're so gracious. At the March 5th, 2025, uh, meeting, she said, at the end of the day, you know, we're a community college. We still have to focus on our mission, which is to educate and graduate and transfer. Make sure students are ready for the workforce. This is us making sure students are ready for the workforce, okay? We have so many students who have transferred to Columbia, uh, University too that I know of. We have students who are working in, uh, USA Today, uh, other nationally recognized media outlets. Okay, so data points, I want to talk about some data. I want to talk about some data points. So we had the vitality viability study. Eight years of the study, journalism department issued 23 degrees. We have one full time professor. Okay, contrast. Twenty six degrees were issued from the English department. They have 12 full time faculty. This is during the same eight year period. We win. We work. We work hard. We do the work. The viability study committee that was called for to study our viability, which didn't need to be studied. But anyway, they voted unanimously to move journalism department from visual and media arts department to the communications department so that we could survive. Okay, Gabriel, President Gabriel, in his wisdom, said, no, he overruled it. This is a viability study that he called for, that he said he wanted to help and support the journalism department. But they unanimously decided to, for the survival of department, to move it to communications, but he overruled that. So that's him saying one thing and doing another. His actions and his words are not lining up. Okay, moving on. When he and I talked, we had an interview, a one on one interview a couple of months ago. And that interview, you can hear it on YouTube.
Final thoughts, that's the three minutes.
Okay, final thoughts. Chancellor Ramon, please help us. I beg you to convince and influence President Gabriel to support the viability study that he called for and and to let those findings stand, to allow us, the journalism department, to move from visual and media arts to the communications department where we can thrive, continue winning the awards and doing the great work of preparing journalism students for the workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the same item is Beatrice Alcala. And then Rhonda Guest. And then John John.
Hello, my name is Beatrice and I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this. I personally also, some of my personal awards, these are national. And being in the professional category, may I present this before you guys? Or just keep them here?
I think in the interest of time, you you just want to articulate your thoughts.
This is a word, this is I've been at the LA Times and the New York Times in 2021. This one was from the press class, beaten by Artie, the Hollywood Reporter and the La Brea Park News. And we received this in 2019 for this magazine, this college magazine in 2018 from the pinnacle awards. Every time I come to the campus and I see the humongous banner that says, you really matter. And I got my question, do I do we really matter? How can we still receiving attacks from the person Gabriel and the chair of Obama, Mr. Kana, that they want to dismantle the program? If we, if they dismantle the program, LACC will never be having any more of this. And also another comment that Professor kind of said that we are a zombie program. I'd like to tell your answer to him. I wish he was here to tell him we're not on some program. Because if we're on some program, we will not have any of this. We tried to excel and I had to thank the college and Professor Guest for guiding us and turning us the right way to succeed. I hope that one day that I will be in the media production. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda Guest?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
If I could just start with, when I was a journalist, professional journalist, my job was to comfort the afflicted and afflict the comfortable. As a journalism educator, it's a little different, you know. But right now, my students are afflicted. And I should start off by saying, I keep hearing this concern for students who are afraid to come to school at this time. I don't know all of the undocumented or AD five forty students, two categories. I'm sure everyone here understands. But there are some who don't tell me about their status until we have to travel or until something happens and they have to give ID for something. But we are not serving them. We're an outlier at LACC. And when I met you two or three weeks ago, I told you that my ask is, please treat me like the other advisors in this district. You've taken away my ability to protect the students who are undocumented, who tell me, Professor, my status is keeping me from coming to school now. That's the language, my status. And I'm like, okay, look, don't come. Let's work this way. Now they have to come to campus because that's what's in the schedule for the fall. That's what my dean has put in the schedule. And it's so awful. You don't have to be political. You just have to do your job. Why is it that so many people who've had the door of opportunity open for them are turning around and shutting it in the face of those who need the help now? Students who do not come and attend now. When we come out of this new norm or whatever this is, they're going to be behind. They need to continue to study in these difficult times. And it's up to us to facilitate for them. I don't know what's wrong. Why LACC is an outlier? It's not happening at Pierce. I said this to you two and a half weeks ago. It is not happening at ELAC. And it's not happening at Valley. Bill Dauber would not have it. But I'm no different from Jill Connolly. I'm no different from Jean Stapleton, except she knows twice as much as me. But I'm no different. But I'm treated differently. And as they say, I'm not having it. It's not going to go unchallenged. I wanted to tell you that something that was particularly bad at my college is that my chair, the Chair of Journalism and Art, at an epic meeting on May 21st, called journalism a zombie discipline. This is no zombie discipline. These students of this magazine from J101, they beat MIT's Telegraph. Anytime you can put LACC and MIT in the same sentence for student success, you got to lean into it. We've done it with Harvard. Our students in 2015 were on the stage with Harvard University for best multimedia report. Something stinks at City College. Please listen to me.
Thank you. And next is John John. Is there John John? There's no one, yeah, by that name on on Zoom right now. Gotcha. There are two iPad and iPhones. But no, no one by the name of John John. We can move on. Next, we have Leslie Cruz. And then Dr. Kennedy. Hello.
Hi.
You have three minutes.
I'm sorry. Afternoon, Board President Ino, Justice Chancellor Ramon. I'm here to speak up, not just for myself, but for those who have silently endured workplace harassment, retaliation and hostile treatment within the district. My name is Leslie Cruz. I am a unit one classified employee, a single mother and a first generation college student. I have proudly served the district for 15 years, beginning as a student worker and now as an administrative assistant to the interim Associate Vice Chancellor of Workforce and Economic Development, Dr. Armando Rivera Figueroa. Over the past year, I have experienced ongoing and escalating patterns of harassment, retaliation, microaggressions and abuse of power while working under Dr. Rivera. This environment has not only impacted my professional life, it has deeply affected my family and my emotional well being. I have my keys and calendar access removed without explanation, being excluded from meetings, assigned last minute directive with no support and called pathetic during a good face meeting. That language is not only inappropriate, it is abusive, unprofessional and violates both Court Policy 3430 and Article 8H of our union contract, which protects employees from retaliation. I've also been performing duties while outside my classification without compensation or reclassification. When I raised concerns after my supervisor repeatedly missed meetings, including with Vice Chancellor Lancaster, a wellness check was conducted. He later cited an exhaustion episode. When it happened again, I sent an email and asked how I could endure, continue doing my job effectively. Instead of support, I was punished retaliated against for showing basic concern and accountability. I also reported that my supervisor was vaping in the office and blew smoke directly at me, stating that he was stressed out, violating Board Rule 3570, which prohibits smoking and vaping in the workplace. The retaliation continued. I filed a formal complaint through Appendix B, Nonsexual Harassment, citing Article 3E, which defines a hostile work environment as repeated behavior that is severe or pervasive enough to negatively impact an employee's working conditions. Yet there is a motion letter I received from Vice Chancellor Lancaster failed to address the harassment, retaliation and harm I documented. Meanwhile, false narratives have been circulated about my work ethic and character and my integrity has been questioned, even though my personnel file remains flawless. The organizational structure for upside location lacks clarity, making it easier for workplace harassment to go unchecked and harder to hold individuals accountable, even with unit support. Abusive behavior by those in power often goes undocumented because there is no process that requires a formal investigation or the placement of findings in an offender's personal file. What hurts the most is not just the mistreatment I've endured, but what it has done to my family. They watched me break down afterward. They seen the toll it has taken mentally, emotionally and financially. I go home and try to smile, help with homework and show up for my kids. But I carry the weight of this injustice every single day.
Final comments, please.
So I asked this board, will you uphold your own policies, not just in writing, but in action? Will you ensure accountability for those in power regardless of title? Will you protect those who work each day with courage, integrity and hope? Will you investigate the systemic gaps that allow this abuse to persist and go unchecked?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dr. Kennedy. And then Sterling Franklin.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I would like to ask you all, do you know that less than 12% of museum staff are from varied backgrounds? Did you know that less than 30% of intellectual leadership at museums represent diverse histories and unique experiences? My name is Dr. Kennedy and I'm here from the Los Angeles County Museum of Art. I'm the Director of Academic Programs and Partnerships. And I am here to present an exciting opportunity. The Mellon undergraduate curatorial fellowship is now accepting applications. As an adjunct of the district, teaching at Los Angeles City College, West Los Angeles College, ELAC, Pierce, numerous colleges in the district. I am well aware and intimately familiar with the immense potential of our students. And I am here to encourage them and also to make you aware of this exciting opportunity. You may know that the David Geffen Galleries are almost open in April of 2026. A brand new building will welcome art from the permanent collection of the largest encyclopedic museum in the Western United States. I really want our students to know that we are looking for undergraduates in their freshman and sophomore years to pursue leadership and opportunities and professions in the museum world. And so I'm here today to not only bring you a flyer, maybe that you can use and distribute widely, but also our gallery guide that will show all of our summer programs. I welcome the opportunity to speak with any of you in more depth about this opportunity. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you. Chancellor House?
And thank you for that, by the way. We do have an actual museum at one of our campuses, Benson Press Art Museum at East LA College. I'd love for you to connect with President Perez as well. We have a wonderful museum certificate program. Always looking for internship and exposure. So if you wouldn't mind, Dr. Perez, at some point to connect before you leave?
Yes.
And we will get any information you have for us out to our, all of our colleges. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Trustee Francis has a follow up question for you all. So, Dr. Kennedy? Sorry. Our trustee.
Yes.
Yes, we also have an art museum too at LACC as well. So I would get you to connect there as well. We have a great art museum that I think will, you'll definitely love as well.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. And Sterling Franklin, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. I came to you a couple of weeks ago and I have some further comments. I'm Sterling Franklin. I'm 78 years old, retired high school teacher, retired lawyer, and now I'm a trustee of a foundation. Since 2017, when I gave my first gift to LA City College, I've given over $650,000 to LA City College. On Monday, I donated $15,000 to establish the Rhonda Guest Endowment Fund to benefit students in the LACC. Thank you. In the LACC Journalism Program. In January, I knew nothing about the Journalism Program. I made an appointment to meet Rhonda Guest to find out about how to buy some advertising in the Collegian Newspaper. And I was very impressed by her. And since I'm a trustee of a foundation, I said, I'd like to give you some money. And she quickly produced a wish list. And I gave $11,000 to the LACC Foundation so she could buy whatever she wanted. And later she said, if I give $2,300, will you match me? And I was astonished. For scholarships for LACC Journalism students so that we could persuade the Goldman Globe Foundation to give more money. So that was pretty cool. And I learned that the Collegian Newspaper had won a lot of awards and students had won a lot of awards. And the magazine had won a lot of awards. And actually, a week ago, Sunday, Professor Guest invited me to attend the Southern California Journalism Association Awards Bank. A big thing, a big deal at the More Hotel, over 500 people. And guess who won the award for the outstanding Collegiate Newspaper in Southern California? LACC Collegium. Stand back, USC. Stand back, UCLA. Get out of here. I come to you today to warn you about a big storm that is coming. When a big storm hits, lots of people are going to get wet. Do not be one of those people. I've reviewed the situation where Professor Guest and the LACC Journalism Program have been treated horribly. Horribly. Many people have come to several LACC District Board meetings to warn board members about this bad situation. I come to warn you too. My analysis of the situation as a retired attorney is that Professor Guest, if Professor Guest retains a lawyer and sues LACC and the LACC District for breach of contract and defamation, she will win a lot of money. If LACC Journalism students who signed up for the LACC Journalism classes and had those classes canceled out from under them.
Final thoughts, please?
Sorry?
Your three minutes is up. So final thoughts, please?
Get an attorney. It's going to cost a lot of money. So please appoint a committee of the board to investigate the situation with the district staff.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for all of that. And so are there any members of the public signed up to address the board related to closed session agenda item matters?
No, ma'am.
No. So now the board will recess to closed session in accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act, Government Code Section 54950 and the Education Code to discuss the matters on the posted closed session agenda pursuant of government code section 54954.5. If there are no objections and hearing none, the meeting will now